...of business is public comment? Oh, let's see. Under the provisions of the open meeting law? Oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
All right, thank you. Under the provisions of open meeting law, for those of you in attendance, please be informed that UMA, Urban Media Arts, will be recording this evening's meeting. Just be aware, there will be audio and video recordings of this meeting, and the first order of business is public comment. Public comment is allowed under council rules. Each speaker is limited to the subject matter relevant to evening's agenda and must keep their comments to two minutes or less. Clerk, do we have people signed up for public comment?
We have eight people signed up tonight.
All right, so we have eight people, so let's call the first person up.
Vincent Lawrence Dixon, please.
Okay, let's. All right, let me get you up there. All right, let's see. Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Good evening. Vincent Dixon, 60 Lake Street, Winchester, Mass. And though I come from a nearby community, I've gotten to know this community quite well over the years. Some of you may know that I've been co-chair of the Environmental Justice Committee of NAACP, the Mystic Valley branch, though I'm not appearing formally on their behalf. But I'm informed certainly by many of the things I've done in this community. I do want to indicate, in terms of the resolution that you have, that would suggest support for H-872 and S-481 bills at the Greater General Court of Massachusetts, that I support this. This is a mechanism, from what I understand, that is rather a bit like a super fund measure or mechanism. There are those who say, well, the legislative session is over and new year starts in January. And though that is true, our legislature has, in its own wisdom, at times passed bills in informal session if there is not objection, or if there is an adjustment for controversial issues, which certainly some think this has an element too. This is a bill that, in many ways, reflects the sense that polluters are, when they know they're causing damage, which many do, are essentially creating negligent conditions and inflicting negligent damage. Boston and Cambridge, I believe, have supported this legislation. I believe a similar bill has actually been made law in Vermont more recently. And so we are neither the leaders nor the followers in this, I would trust. But I think it's an important opportunity to educate people. And I would point to two things that are also part of the environment that we've come to in recent years. One is PFAS. A bill was just signed by the governor that bans its presence in anything relating to a firefighter or fire department. And neonicotinoids, which has damaged a lot of bees. These are examples of negligent aspect. I would support the resolution, and I thank you for your time and the pleasure of being here.
All right, thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Philip Bronder-Geroux and Hugh Holly. All right, so please state your names and addresses for the record. Thank you.
Yes, Philip Bronder-Geroux, 40 Sprague Street, Malden. And I will speak to item 360-24. And Hugh, you want to state your name and address?
Hugh Holly, Avon Street, Malden.
All right. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you so much for this opportunity. The Friends, we're here to speak on behalf of the Friends of the Malden River. Hugh and I are both founding members. The Friends of the Malden River thank you in advance for supporting this resolution to endorse state legislative actions to make polluters pay. The city of Malden has no choice but to protect its residents from climate change. We have invested monies and time into policies and actions to protect our residents from extreme weather. And certainly, we're all aware of the Malden River Works project. The Massachusetts Legislature needs to hear that all municipalities demand that the state of Massachusetts stands firm to make the polluters pay. The oil and gas companies are culpable for putting us at risk of extreme weather while profiting from pollutants while receiving federal subsidies. The companies have already calculated their future liabilities due to ongoing lawsuits and climate pledges. In 2024, the state of Massachusetts committed $52.4 million towards climate resilience projects, and an additional $7 million to aid to help with devastating inland flooding in 2023. Making polluters pay legislative action would create a fund for more climate resilience projects in mitigation from a small percentage of the fossil fuel industry's mammoth profits. So we'll just highlight one reason why this bill is so necessary. We don't, I don't know if you recall, there was an ExxonMobil spill violating the Clean Water Act resulting in 15,200 gallons of petroleum product into the Lower Mystic. This happened in 2009. And then there was an agreement to actually pay $1 million to Massachusetts Environmental Trust and $4.6 million to the North American Wetlands.
Five seconds, Philip. Great, thank you.
Pardon?
Get five seconds.
Okay. And it took two nonprofits to spend their own resources to get them to finally pay up in 2020. So we think it's important that the city of Malden, like the city of Medford, support this action. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Philip, from you. Okay. Okay, next speaker is Zaida Ortiz.
Good evening, everyone. Zaida Ortiz, 58 Almont Street, Main Streets of Malden, Massachusetts. Thank you so much. I'm here this evening in support of a resolution to make polluters pay. My advocacy work has been centralized on state legislation, as you may know. And I also know that leveraging the power of our municipality and its leadership is critical to help demonstrate the desire of our state litigation to act on bills. Legislation season is over with, but we are hoping to create momentum by finding resolutions throughout the Commonwealth to get things going at the beginning of the next legislative process. Malden is already feeling the impacts of climate change, and it will only get worse. The increased incidence of storms will damage coastlines and increase inland flooding. And we have seen that already happening. They estimate that inland property damage due to climate change will increase by almost 50% by 2050. This disproportionate impact will hit our lower-income communities, like Ward 7 and Ward 8. I am thankful to Councilor McDonald and the committee for the hard work that they have done to create the Climate Action Plan, and I hope that this initiative, the Make Polluters Pay, will help fund these initiatives. The worst thing that we have going for us is when we have great ideas but don't have the money to pay for it. And this is a common-sense solution that would help create the funds that we need in the format of a super fund. I hope that you will support this key bill, and I hope that you will favorably support this bill, and we can look forward to the rest of Malden's future and our future generations thanking us for that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next speaker is Rachel Boyce.
Good evening. Rachel Boyce, 69 Tower Street, Jamaica Plain, Massachusetts. I'm the climate justice and resilience organizer for the Better Future Project and a co-lead on the Make Polluters Pay campaign. At its core, this climate change super fund bill demands accountability for damages done to our communities by companies that engage in the extraction and refinement of fossil fuels, companies with greenhouse gas emissions that met or exceeded 1 billion metric tons between 2000 and 2018, and with sufficient connection to Massachusetts as satisfies the Constitution's nexus requirements. This bill targets these companies and demands they pay their proportional share of $75 billion to pay for climate changed adaptive infrastructure projects. These could be, but are not limited to, upgrading storm water drainage systems, developing preventative healthcare programs, installing energy-efficient cooling systems, addressing urban heat island effects, and so much more. So why should this matter to Malden? In Malden's recently released Climate Action Plan, the report notes in the last 32 years, the city has experienced 22 natural hazards that triggered federal or state disaster declarations, and these hazards will only increase in frequency and severity. The Climate Action Plan rolled out thoughtful and ambitious climate strategies to help protect Maldonians from these impacts, but in each strategy notes the inherent limitation money. I believe in this governing body's ability to seek out grant opportunities, pursue funders, and plead your case to the various state offices, but at the end of the day, it won't be enough and nor should it be, because Malden didn't make this mess. Massachusetts didn't make this mess. Our climate change super fund bill demands that those who made the mess pay to clean it up. By passing the municipal resolution in support of the Make Polluters Pay bill, the Malden City Council is sending a strong signal to Beacon Hill that it should not be Malden taxpayers picking up the tab. It should be the multi-billion dollar corporations that made the mess in the first place.
All right, thank you very much. Next speaker is Laura Thompson.
Hello. Hi.
Hi, thanks.
Hi, I'm Laura Thompson. I'm at 53 Placestead Road here in Malden. And I am asking my, I'm adding my comment in support of the resolution Make Polluters Pay in Malden. The Polluters Pay Climate Fund Act of 2024 asks fossil fuel companies to be held financially accountable for their corporate decisions that have impacted our environment in a negative way. The Polluters Pay Climate Fund Act of 2024 has set a goal of generating $75 billion over the next 25 years. This act, if passed, is a legislative stake in the ground for corporate accountability regarding corporate actions and the effects of those actions that they have on the environment. The Polluters Pay Fund Act of 2024 is a straightforward and equitable way to generate revenue for communities to combat the ever-changing climate crisis. The funds call for special attention to environmental justice communities who are often more at risk of exposure to rising heat levels in their communities, greater risk of flooding due to overlooked drainage systems, and generations of environmental hazards heaped on their communities. By having a sizable fee imposed on major polluting fossil fuel corporations, it may help to move these corporations away from fossil fuels and move them towards more environmentally-friendly fuels at a greater pace. I fully support the passing of this resolution in Malden. I believe Make Polluters Pay Climate Fund Act of 2024 can help communities execute on their climate action plans by providing much-needed funding resources. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Next speaker is Caroline Godet.
Hello, my name is Caroline Godet. I'm at 77 Forest Street in Malden. And I'm here to support the resolution to make polluters pay. Climate change is underway, leading to more volatile storms, changes in weather patterns, and warmer temperatures. Examples in recent memory include just this past January, when winter storms and deep freeze took over most of the country, leading to almost 100 deaths in the South. The 2021 cold snap in Blizzard, which seized Texas, overwhelmed the power grid and caused hundreds of deaths. Later that same year, a heat wave in the Pacific Northwest, killing additional hundreds. Not to mention major rainstorms, which caused massive flooding, including last year in Vermont, when rivers reached up to 20 feet higher than normal, and what we see regularly now at the Boston Seaport. Hotter temperatures lead to bigger wildfires, which even though they are often over 2,000 miles away in places like California and Western Canada, cause poor air quality and asthma attacks here in Malden. Impervious surfaces like concrete and asphalt that cover more and more of our cities and towns serve to make flooding worse and increase temperatures in cities like Malden to dangerous levels. There are changes in how we build and how we update infrastructure that can help prevent flooding, cool hot spots, and even save us energy and money with often simple technology that has been proven out. Often, these changes include things like planting trees and native flowers, which can make our shared spaces more pleasant, even when there isn't an extreme weather event. However, implementing these things does take capital investment. We now know that fossil fuel companies like ExxonMobil predicted global warming as far back as the 70s, 50 years ago. We also know they intentionally misguided the public about this reality starting soon thereafter. They realize that their core business was at stake if they allowed this information to spread. These companies, after decades of denial and misinformation about the impact to the planet of burning fossil fuels, are mind-bogglingly profitable. Instead of continuing with the status quo of making taxpayers pay to mitigate the dangers of a warming earth, let's make polluters pay in Massachusetts. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Caroline. All right, next speaker is Janet Green.
Hi, I'm Janet Green. I live at 57 Rocky Nook in Malden, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak. I also want to thank Ari Taylor, I'm on Ward 5, and my counselor, for putting forth this resolution. And I don't want to go into too many details, because everyone else has so eloquently spoke about the details and about climate change and the devastating effects we've already had from climate change. And so I believe in this Make Polluters Pay, that I would like you to pass this resolution as Boston and Cambridge and Medford already have, because that would send a signal to wake up our legislature, because our legislature has not acted on this bill yet, and we'd like to send a signal to try to get them to, if Malden and other municipalities do pass this bill, and I'd hope you would, and other municipalities would as well, to wake up the Massachusetts Legislature so that they would act and pass this bill. And also, I would like to mention that I work for J.CAN Massachusetts Climate Action Network Mass., which has not officially endorsed this, but we do have a legs and regs committee which fully understands how the legislature, Massachusetts Legislature, does not act. Very often, they, I don't know how many, was it three out of 21 bills? I'm not sure exactly how many they passed in this legislative session. I could have the numbers wrong. But they're very concerned about that. And so, in any case, so you know that I'm very concerned about climate change, although I am talking as an individual, since they have not actually endorsed this, but hopefully that they will come around, but we just haven't had time to deal with it yet. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Great, next up is Debbie Kirchner.
Hi, I'm Debbie Kirchner. I live at 131 Pear Street in Malden. And I'm a volunteer with 350 Mass., Better Future Project, which is proposing Make Polluters Pay. And I just wanted to say that I really feel like part of my community tonight, being here with you all. And it's perfect timing, but with the new Climate Action Plan highlighting the funds we're going to need. And I'm going to contribute to those funds through my taxes, but that might not be enough. So the primary source of greenhouse gases, like carbon and methane, because this bill is not about, you know, pollution in the ground, but gases into the air, are gas and oil companies like Exxon. So it's only fair to make polluters pay, too. The costs of dealing with the effects of rapid climate change in Malden are unavoidable. The only question is, should the whole burden fall on our community, or should the corporations who made billions off of fossil fuels chip in? And every day, I work with little kids, and one of the most important lessons I teach them is it's our responsibility to clean up after ourselves. And this summer, I took a little girl to play with Conway Park in Somerville. I later read that this was once a toxic site until it was transformed by the federal super fund, which makes companies pay for chemicals they dumped into the ground, similar to the Erin Brockovich story. Targeted greenhouse gas funds, like Make Polluters Pay, will enable us to transform our community, too. So thank you so much for how much you take care of Malden. And through this resolution, I hope you'll reach out to the State House and ask them to do the same. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Great. Is there any emails or written? All right, so then we can move on to the next order of business. So, all right.
This evening's.
Okay, go ahead, consent agenda.
This evening's consent agenda consists of two sets of meeting minutes to be approved, three reappointments to be confirmed, four appointments to be placed on file, three petitions to be referred to license, one paper to be referred to rules and ordinance, and one paper to be referred to a joint public hearing of planning board with rules and ordinance.
All right. Does any, okay, go ahead. Does any councilor have a desire to remove any of these items from the consent agenda for the purpose of discussion? All right, Counselor Crowe, let's see.
35624, the one that's going to rules and ordinance and planning. And I mean, I always appreciate the consent agenda and move things on, but I think this is sort of a big sort of lift, and it could be significant to do another site plan review committee. I do think, I know that this has come up a couple of years ago, probably four, three or four years ago, and it went through committee, and it went through the public hearing. But I do think a little explanation of, you know, what we're looking at. And even when I saw it and I saw the site plan review, I was like, we have a few of them. Is this changing something? Can we, you know, because we have.
So I think just your request, we can, we'll take it off and we will discuss it. So that's all we got to do. It just takes one councilor to object. Any other matters anybody particularly objects to? So you don't have to, no need to explain it. Just object, it's done.
Okay.
All right, so, okay, so with Counselor Crowe's exemption noted, is any other question on the consent agenda? All right, so then I will take, on Counselor Crowe's motion to approve the consent agenda with that item taken out, seconded by Counselor Simonelli. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, the consent agenda is changed, is approved with that change. All right, so, all right, so then, all right. So let's see, so should we, I guess, will we push that to number seven? We should take that up now. So, all right, so I am the sponsor of the paper, so, so, all right, so will the city clerk read that paper, 35624, into the record?
Paper 356-24, be it ordained by the Malden City Council that the code of the city of Malden is hereby amended by adding Title 12, Chapter 12, Section 500, Site Plan Review, Educational and Religious Uses. Sponsor is Steve Winslow.
All right, so I'm going to give the gavel to Counselor O'Malley, since I am the sponsor here. So this is just coming up in the context of the, this is something that the building inspector approached me. There is some consideration in the community of an institution to go ahead and build a new building. So I appreciate that institution reached out to the city and had that discussion. You know, Building Inspector Miller noted that under the Dover Amendment, Chapter 40, that communities, rather than, you know, the way communities are handling these situations is to use site plan review processes. And so we had actually discussed this about three years ago, and at that time, the recommendation was not to have site plan review, so the council just, we made some amendments to dimensional controls, but Building Inspector Miller says that puts him kind of in a bind that really the appropriate thing, and he thinks there's good case law to say that most communities are having site plan reviews. So, and I did also reach out to our planner, Michelle Romero, to look at that. So basically, the paper that's presented is, you know, it actually pretty much went through, you know, went to rules and ordinance in the joint planning committee. We made revisions. So this is just the paper that came out of that process, but ultimately, you know, did not move forward. So that's what it's based on. So, you know, actually, Building Inspector Miller mentioned today that perhaps we should also add daycares. I mean, yeah, this is me, as a ward council, concerned about something happening in my ward, but this could happen in anybody's ward. I mean, a daycare, a religious institution, or an educational use can be added, and it could be your turn next to have something like this, where then the community has no opportunity to have input. So, and as I say, I'm not, you know, I think it's just something we should be able to have the ability as a community to meet and provide comments on what is going on. Under the law, that's, it's really then, the, you know, that is the process, but the Dover Amendment does allow the use, so it's something that we can have that discussion, it occurs discussion. So that's why I'm just looking to have it, you know, one, there's kind of two options here that I would propose. Either we send it to the Rules and Ordinance and Planning Board. I mean, the other suggestion would be to send it to just Rules and Ordinance, then to discuss whether we want to add daycare into it. So I say it's just, the building inspector is saying that he's in a bind if someone comes in with a building permit request for these things. He really recommends that we have a site plan review process for these particular uses, and that's what other communities are doing. So that's really the impetus here, was, I mean, certainly, as any ward council would be concerned about developments in their community, to make sure we have community input. I'm open-minded to this, you know, what happens in my neighborhood, but I do like to have the conversation. So that's really what's driving it. So, all right, let's see, I see Counselor Linehan. So, actually, you, it's you, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
All right, go ahead.
I'm up, okay. Thank you. President Pro Tem, thank you. So I would just be in favor of sending it to ordinance, I think, first is my inclination to sort of hash out some of the things that Counselor Winslow had just mentioned. And I do think there is, you know, one sort of sizable property that we all probably know what we're referring to here, but I will say, like, in my ward, there are some institutions where we've had questions about whether this type of process might emerge, if they had future plans to do things. So I think it is applicable to other parts of the city, certainly. And I think my question that I just want to make sure I have right is sort of, like, for the benefit of those listening, so the Dover Amendment governs zoning, right, which is basically what can go where, and essentially, educational and religious uses have more leeway under the zoning law. Dimensional controls is how you relate to your neighbors, and site plan review is aesthetics and environmental impacts. Would that be an accurate summary of what we're talking about? Because I think this is a little jargon-heavy, so I just want to make sure that we're being clear.
Yeah, I mean, the Dover Amendment does not give carte blanche to those institutions. You know, there's requirements to have, that meet reasonable setbacks, you know, parking requirements, other type of things, but it's not, we can't, we can't, you know, require a special permit and say yea or nay. The law basically allows the use, and we can establish kind of reasonable, you know, constraints. And if there's a desire to change what we already have in terms of our, you know, setbacks, then there should be a discussion about that. We don't just waive them, we set them. And we did, you know, one of the things, you know, like, say, several years ago, we reviewed all those requirements, and we stood by them and actually added to them. So this is just a way to say, you know, if you want to vary from that, we think that, you know, we, those conditions are reasonable. If you want to vary, we should have a community input on that. So that's really what we're saying, that it is, you know, we've set clearly in our zoning of what setbacks and parking requirements and open space requirements would apply to these uses. And I guess we expect people to, you know, follow those or have a conversation with the community about why that something else should be different. So that's really, you know, but I think that the building inspector feels that that's, it's not his role.
Yeah.
To waive the requirements that this council set. We have zoning, so that's the type of thing. A site plan review would be beneficial to potential users, as well as, you know, give flexibility to the community. So that's really what it's about. So that's, that is, as I say, that's, it gives flexibility. Right now, it's kind of yea or nay. Either you meet the requirements or not. So that's, and then you can contest whether they're reasonable or not, you know, in some way. But right now, the building inspector, there's not a process for the building inspector to have that conversation and have a result, so.
And it wouldn't change whether or not variances are required? That process would essentially still be the same?
So that, I guess that's the question, that, I mean, I believe, you know, with Malden Catholic, they consented to go to the zoning board. This, that's not actually technically required, allowed under the Dover Amendment, is my understanding. I don't know if our council is here to do that, but I'm not fully briefed on that part.
Okay.
But it is, it is, right now, you know, we can set reasonable conditions on setbacks, parking, open space, some just requirements on these uses. Then if they don't comply, the building inspector right now is saying, his choice is to not allow it. So if there's some reasonable, you know, reasons why there needs to be some variances, and the community is willing to support that, then that's what a site plan review could allow.
Okay.
So that, then he feel he could approve it, so.
Understood. So it gives a little flexibility or ability to have conversation, as opposed to black and white. Okay, thank you. to black and white. Okay, thank you.
All right, so Counselor Crowe.
Counselor Crowe.
Thank you. And this is just a minor thing. I, I do think sending it to ordinance, since, like, I, I understand educational and religious, I'm not sure how daycares fit into, you know, sort of that leeway protected, you know, class. And I know this sounds like, you know, very minor, and we can make these edits in ordinance, but, you know, even when we have, like, site plan review, RIO, we have, you know, can we distinguish this from, am I looking at site plan review, Malden River, Rose Quarry, RIO? Do you mean they could, because it really has a very distinct thing. I mean, I mean, add a couple of letters to it, or something like that, some, but, I was confused, because I said, I thought we have a site plan review, then I read it, and we're doing something a little different. So, if we could probably, like, you know, look at those things in ordinance, I mean, nothing, nothing major, but I do think that's the right place to send it to.
Yeah, and just on that, I know, you know, Building Inspector Miller noted that, you know, now there's the accessible dwelling units by right, and that, that might be something else that we want that opportunity. So, that, that's just really, it's coming up in that context of, we have some by right things that, you know, that we can set some reasonable parameters on, but when, what, what's the process if someone wants to suggest a variance? That's really what is suggested. Otherwise, if someone doesn't meet it, they don't, can't do it. So, all right, so that's the...
Counselor Simonelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say that, you know, I, I support this paper. I, I think that, you know, if, if you could have more discussion on, you know, development, especially in the, for a ward council, I mean, I've been doing a lot of development in my neighborhood, continue to do so. I know that Counselor Seika too, she's been working diligently on moving forward on some development stuff. So, I think that for the ward council, anytime you get a chance to be able to kind of go in, I mean, Strategic Planning does a great job with, like, fitting things, for me, anyway, fitting things in, so it kind of coincides with the neighborhood, so it doesn't, like, you know, stick out somewhere, and it look kind of funny. So, again, I, I just want to say that I do, Mr. President, support this paper, because I, I think that the more discussion that you have as a ward council on what is good for your neighborhood and what is not, I, I think it's, it allows you a little bit of, more, a little bit more latitude to, you know, do what you need to do for the neighborhood and make it look right. So, I like the paper. Thank you.
Counselor Winslow.
Yes, so, so I make a motion that we refer this paper to Rules and Ordinance.
Second. So, from, from the chair, if I could, I, I would not be in favor of adding daycares to this. I just know that the, daycares are such short supply. And I think that making it more difficult for daycares to open up, I don't think is in, in the best interest. Particularly, like, we're not, we're not talking about daycares that have, like, thousands of children. You know, it's gonna be rather small compared to what, talking about, like, a full educational facility. I, I would also be comfortable sending it to both Rules and Ordinance and the Planning Board, only because, you know, we are getting towards the end of the year, we know how things go. And that's probably because I'm comfortable with not adding daycares. So, if there's, if there's, like, a desire to add daycares, then maybe it makes sense to send to ordinance, but I'm not gonna twist people's arms. The only, the only question that I would have would be for our city planner, if, she is here?
She's here.
Okay, sorry. When, when would, when would any, if someone submits a building permit, when would they be required to follow what we're being, what's being proposed? Would it be when we send it to the, to the ordinance committee? Would it be when we send it to a joint hearing? Because that's something that we probably also want to be aware of.
Michelle Romero, city planner. What, I'm sorry, what, what's the question? The, when they would, who would...
What's the date that triggers when a applicant would have to follow what we're being, what's being proposed?
So, when an applicant, if this, if this were to move forward, as I've read the paper and as I understand it, when an applicant applies for a building permit, or an occupancy permit to use an existing building for one of the uses that would be covered under the site plan review, it would then trigger the site plan review process to begin?
And I, and I guess, just to clarify, like, as, as of today, even though we haven't enacted it, or is it, like, the date of first publication?
Um, the data, the date of first publication is the date that the state law provides an exemption. If you have a building permit in hand, or, it actually only says building permit or special permit in hand, you would be exempt from any new ordinance. That, as of the date of first publication, of the notice of public hearing on the zoning amendment. That being said, historically, the city has extended that exemption to applications that were filed prior to the date of first publication of the notice of public hearing. So, even if you don't have the permit in hand, but you file an application prior to that publication date, we traditionally have extended that exemption.
Thank you. So, yeah, from the chair, I would, I would support sending it to both. I'm gonna go over to Counselor Seika for the first time.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Daycares are added because they're part of the Dover Amendment, so they have to be added in order to comply. So, if, yeah. I had a conversation with Nelson earlier about this exact paper. So, daycares are included under the Dover Amendment.
Understood.
And must be, in order for us to comply. So, maybe we should send it just to ordinance first, just so we can understand a, a little bit better before we send it to, off to both. We have plenty of time, it's September 24th. We still have October, November. I mean, I, I know that, you know, time seems to move very quickly, but we do have multiple meetings. I'm, I'm fairly confident in Amanda's ability to get it in and out of ordinance. So, I would like to hear more about it. I only had a brief conversation, but I, I would like to hear more about it. So, I, I say we send it to just regular ordinance and...
Counselor Spatafor.
Do you guys know what that, I just got a point from you, Counselor Winslow mentioned ADUs going in here. Could, could that still go in here later on, or is it the way we, the way we are setting it? It's very narrow in scope.
Um, the, we, I mean, somebody, we still, you know, we, we have our own requests to get updated on what we will be required to do on the ADU law. So, I think it's too preliminary to put the ADUs in. And I, I did ask that of, you know, Building Inspector Miller, and he didn't, he said, we should wait on ADUs, but, but, but daycares are already a use that we define, and it's already under the Dover Amendment. So, he's, he thought it would be best to include them all. I mean, that was something we didn't talk about last time we talked about this stuff, so.
Yeah, the only reason why I asked, is I saw a story the other day, it says that ADUs on historical registered buildings now, is, is it allowed, even by, on historic registered? So, things like that are gonna come up. And I don't know if this was the committee, but if, if, if our building commissioner, which I'm sure is maybe not here, if he feels that we can wait, we can wait, that's fine.
Thank you very much. So, we have a motion and a second to refer this to ordinance. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is referred to ordinance.
So, on to the next order of business.
Council will hold public hearings on national grid petitions to install a new pole in underground conduits. I'm going to read both of these together, because they both have to do with poles on the same property, if that's okay. Paper 358-24, petition, Massachusetts Electric Company, DBA, National Grid, Plan Number 30971373. National Grid to install one SO pole on Sharon Street. Pole P 5633, in front of 50 Crystal Street, to maintain clearance from the new building to overhead lines. Paper 359-24, petition, Massachusetts Electric Company, DBA, National Grid, Plan Number 30971373. National Grid to install two four-inch underground electrical conduits, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures, starting near pole 5630, and continuing through the sidewalk to the property at 50 Crystal Street for the new customer's electric service. And we have Counselor Simonelli as the representative counselor on both of these petitions in Ward 7.
Right, so, Counselor Simonelli, just want to give a briefing, and then we can hear from the applicant.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President. You know, this has to do with Malden Catholic and their athletic facility that they're building there, so I've been working alongside them real, very closely. And, nothing against you here, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna pound National Grid for a second here, all right, buddy? I'm sorry, but, you know, don't take it personal. You look like, you look like a nice kid, so I, I don't want to, like, you know, be a monster to you. But, you know, you know, I would like to, I'd like to move this paper forward, because, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to penalize anybody like Malden Catholic, who's a really good neighbor for my community, and, you know, they've got to be scholarshiping some kids from the Newland Street housing and the Bowden Apartments, if they want to go to Malden Catholic. And we've got some other things in the works with them as far as using their athletic facility, and they're in the midst of it. So, I would ask my colleagues to move this paper forward. However, that being said, you know, I know that Counselor Spatafor has got some issues going on, like, 25 years now, because I remember back in 98, we were going on this with the double and triple polling with you guys. Again, I, I know it's not you, but, you know, National Grid hasn't been a real good neighbor themselves either lately, because I, I'll even go even further. Kirsted Park, for example, the, the grass got out of hand, if you had noticed it over the summertime. I mean, it looks good now, but what happened was the developer was, was finished with the, with the tarp lot and everything else in June, early June. So, he wanted to try and get the grass in. However, National Grid just kind of did it maybe about three weeks ago, and put the power on over there. So, we've been waiting all this time for them to put the power on, and, you know, we kind of paid the price on that a little bit. So, I, I think there's a little bit of tension here, going back and forth with National Grid, because I've actually spoken to some people that, you know, wa, needed service changes in my neighborhood and stuff. And it was funny, because when they called, they, and these are just, these are...
They said the city was holding...
Yeah, no, no, these are just residents, right, you know, constituents. And whoever they were talking to said to them, well, you know, Malden hasn't been, you know, too cooperative with, like, why, why would you say that to a, to a customer that's trying to get a, a service change? So, I mean, I had to, like, call the state rep and everything else. For this guy, he built like a, I don't know, it was a three or four unit piece of property in the Holyoke section. And, and it held it up for, for quite a while. The neighborhood was kind of getting a little bit aggravated with it, because, you know, the property was just sitting there. Because National Grid, I don't know, just want to take their time and, you know, be a little bit disingenuine, I think, you know? And, look, you know, we've been asking you guys to fix these poles now. Like I said, I, I mean, I was on a council back in 1998, we were asking you to do it. Double, triple polling. And we get no response. So, again, with that being said, I would like to ask my colleagues, because again, I don't want to penalize Malden Catholic. I mean, they're, they're in the middle of construction. I don't want to hold up them. But, moving forward from here, you know, I, you know, I would side with any of my colleagues here on holding up National Grid on any permits moving forward in the future. So, thank you, Mr. President.
All right, Counselor Spatafor, you have something to brief, or do you want to wait till after the applicant speaks?
I'll be brief. I'll be brief.
All right.
This is a tough night for you, being part of, being here, when you're talking about pollution in your company, huh? So, you should go back to your, go back to your boss and tell him you've paid the price for this.
Wrong night.
Yeah, I, I just, I'll be, I'll be very brief. So, so, and this is enough for you, but, you know, double poles have been a passion of mine, and what happens is, the only time we get poles moved, in fact, we've had a triple pole issue here, which is, like, heavily scarring. It comes every 75 years. But, the challenges, the serious threat with double poles are, one is they become unstable. There's a couple near Beebe, where they've been there so long that they're getting old and they're not tied together. And, and we call National Grid, because you guys own all the poles now, and you'll say, well, it's Comcast. The old days, it used to be, well, it's, it's the Malden Fire Department, because they're, they're wise, and you guys are slow. Well, the good news is, we're not on poles anymore, so you can't use us as the excuse. So, it's really you, the phone company, and Comcast. That's it. And it's amazing, when, when you guys need a permit to do something, how fast those double poles come down. So, my point is, it's gonna be exactly what Counselor Simonelli said. I'll support this. It's a good organization, the city of Malden, they need the power. I don't want to hold up their construction. Time is money. But, just go back to your bosses and tell them, first of all, this pollution thing's probably gonna pass, you're not getting a raise next year. Second thing is, don't come here for a permit unless we get an updated double poles, a list, and we see some progress. Fear? Thank you.
All right.
Most of Mr. Chairman.
Great, great. So, let's have the applicant, why don't you talk a little bit about the project, and then we'll open the hearing.
Sure. Yeah, I can talk about the project.
I mean, he's part of the hearing.
Okay, all right, so I'm gonna, I declare the public hearing open, so, and then you can speak in favor of it. So, your name and address and...
Name, Zach Trainey. Address, 170 Medford Street, Malden.
Yeah.
So, I'm here today with two petitions for the Malden Catholic project. Essentially, why the ask of me being here is, the way that they're building is setback, it is too close to the overhead high voltage lines. Due to OSHA clearances, we require, we have a, a company policy of maintaining 10 feet, and this is based upon the OSHA clearance to keep a worker safe during construction. The way that the building is being built is too close to the lines, and the solution that I'm offering, by installing one pole, this new pole would actually allow us to go underground with the lines. There's currently other poles down that street. It would still contain other renters of the poles, so things like communications lines, various companies. There is an alternative to bring the entire pole line across the street. You know, anything is possible with enough money. This would come out at significant cost to the customer, and these are the only two solutions that I can figure out with. I've looked at this job extensively, and this is what we could come up with.
All right.
If there's any questions about this project, I can absolutely answer, and I can also address your questions as well.
All right. So, right now, I have Counselor Taylor, have a question?
Yeah, I, not a question about the project. I just want to kind of add to what my colleagues have said. So, I originally would have petitioned to table this tonight, because I have been asking for information from National Grid on a project that they started in Ward 5 a few months ago. And they have started the project and can't give me updates as to what's going on, even though I've asked several times. And it does seem, from the communications I've gotten, when they want a hearing, they are very communicative, and once they get it, there was actually a slip-up where, where someone emailed me, when they shouldn't have, and said, you don't have to answer her, we already have the hearing. So, I, you know, if, if Malden Catholic wasn't such a good neighbor, and paying for, you know, like, this coming at a cost to them, this is something that I absolutely was going to ask to put on hold tonight. But, seeing that, you know, that is the case, just so that they know, and, you know, going forward, that will absolutely be my motion, until I get some answers and we get some progress in Ward 5, with poles that are leaning, that look like they can come down on Forestale School anytime. It's just, you know, work being done in the city is unacceptable to have it be at the cost of our residents. So, thank you.
Understood. And just to address everyone as a whole, I definitely like to get everyone involved with my company's communication, sorry, community affairs representatives a lot more closely. I can absolutely follow up, even right after this. If I could get somebody's card, I can email. My position as the designer, I think, I can also communicate with you also. I think it'd be best to also involve a few more people, so that communication is more open. In terms of the double poles, so, the way we own the poles is a joint agreement with Verizon. Generally, when a pole's replaced, second pole gets installed, we move all of our facilities off the pole, and then it's, per the agreement, Verizon actually removes the pole. And they can only do so when all the other communication companies have removed their attachments, working top to the bottom. So, sometimes it is us, absolutely. And if there's any cases, I'm happy to write them down tonight. What was your other question, Counselor Simonelli? Was that Fitzgerald Park?
No, it was Kirsted Park.
All right, let's see. Kirsted Park, yeah.
Thank you. No, Kirsted Park. So, you know, after talking with the, the developers over there, you know, they were finished with the park in early June. So, they wanted to try and get the irrigation system going, so they can, you know, it's a brand-new irrigation system there. So, and they wanted to see, like, you know, where it covers, to make sure it's covering all the right spots, and to actually start doing the grass. So, what happened was that I went on vacation, and I come back, and the place looked like a cornfield over there. like, um, a cornfield over there or something. I mean, they did a great job and the park looks great. But finding out that they were waiting on National Grid to come in and, and like, you know, they started calling you like, not you personally, started calling National Grid in like May. And, you know, they, they didn't get there until about three weeks ago, you know, so. And now you see, uh, if you go by there that, you know, we've got sawed thanks to, uh, all the work that, uh, Debbie Burke and her team did over there, um, to, to do that. But, you know, I mean, my neighborhood was going crazy. I mean, it was just totally awful. And, uh, you know, I mean, it's fixed now, but, you know, we, we shouldn't have to be, you know, as a city, that should be a priority, you know? I mean, the developer's going to go to another project and, you know, they're not going to sit around and wait, you know? So if, if National Grid had went down there and turned the power, we had like no power to the park. We didn't even know if the lights worked. So, you know, it's got to be a little bit more harmonious relationship with, uh, National Grid and the city of Malden. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Seminelli. I can definitely bring that back. Right. Um, let's see, let me get here. I lost my arrow there. Counselor O'Malley.
Uh, thank you. Uh, good job tonight, Zach. This has been quite a grilling and I apologize for that. Um, are you an engineer?
I am, yes.
And so, uh, are all electrical lines going to be underground once this is done?
Um-
On that street?
So I have a drawing that might help.
I have the drawing.
Oh, you have it? Perfect. Um, so from pole five, six, three, three, um, moving southward, uh, the primary lines will be underground. Um, the, the rest of the poles will still be there. They still carry, uh, QV renters on the pole, so-
Could you say that, the number again one more time?
Yep. So from pole five, six, three, three-
Yep.
The, the highest lines, the primary voltage will go underground. Um, we also carry a secondary voltage under that, which would still remain on the pole.
I don't see, I don't see, I don't see three, three.
Um, sorry, there's two drawings. One has, uh, underground facilities and the other has, uh, a pole.
Oh, hold on. Okay.
I could-
Oh, yeah, I see where you're talking about.
Okay.
Okay, so that's the new pole. So from the new pole?
Correct.
Okay. To the corner of Crystal Street.
Yeah, so it would, the underground trench would be in the sidewalk.
And you're going to be redoing the sidewalks?
Uh, yes. So, uh, I believe the developer has plans to, um, redo the sidewalk. It should be the same plans that are, uh, in the building permit.
Understood. And then, um, what other lesses are on the pole after you take your lines underground?
Um, off the top of my head, I don't recall, but it would, uh, be some form of communication company like Comcast, Verizon.
Is there, is there room in the sidewalk for them to go underground?
Um, so this would be, uh, not, there doesn't exist any, um, underground conduit in the sidewalk currently.
You'd be putting it in?
The, so the customer would be doing this at the customer's expense.
Okay.
So they would be installing two ducts, um, one to serve for their electric line, another to serve as a spare for them in the event of a failure. Um, so for them to, you know, increase the number of duct banks would just, it would add to the cost.
So there could be potential of putting all of the rest of the utilities underground? Potentially?
You know, anything is possible with enough money. Um, I know I keep saying it, but it, it would require a lot of reconfiguration of lines. It would require a lot of electricians to reach out to every individual house in the street. Um, also, communication companies to visit every house on the street. Overall, just coming at significant costs.
Luckily, no houses on the street.
Businesses.
But thank, thank you so much. I appreciate you clarifying.
Counselor McDonald.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I just want to go back to what Counselor Taylor said and, um, you know, I laughed at first because that's so ridiculous. Um, but if that is in fact the case, that there was an email from National Grid staff that was saying, that was paying that level of disrespect to, uh, an elected official, um, again, Zach, I'm sorry, like, you are here to be beat up by us, it feels like, and so, you know-
That's okay.
I, assuming you didn't send that email, then that's, that's not really on you. But I would, I would, I mean, tell me if this feels appropriate to say, Counselor Taylor, I would strongly recommend a written apology from your superiors by the end of the week in addition to prompt responses to these other questions raised if you would like to come, if anyone from National Grid would like to come before us and have another hearing anytime soon.
I think that's fair.
Does that seem fair? I just did, I'm sorry. I was like, I laughed and then it just made me mad. And I was like, I don't want that to go unremarked on. That's, that's pretty, that's pretty over the line. So please carry that message back.
Will do. Understood.
All right. Um, any further questions? Um, and is, all right, so, uh, do you have anything else to add, Zach, or anything?
Um, Counselor Seminelli, I think I have your email. I'll follow up right, um, on my phone and just make sure I count everything tonight.
So anything else to add on the project then? Any, everybody clear on what the project is? Okay, so, well, no, we got to first, I have to ask, anyone wishing to speak in favor of the petition, petition, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Is anybody going to come and speak in favor? Let's see, are we going to have someone speak in favor? All right, no, okay, so, all right. Um, all right, one last chance to speak in favor? All right. Um, hearing none and seeing none, I declare, um, that portion of the hearing closed. Is any, anyone willing, uh, wishing to speak in opposition to the petition? So if so, please come forward and state your name and address. All right? No one, uh, is going to, uh, speak, uh, in opposition? So hearing none and seeing none, I declare that portion of the hearing closed. And so therefore, I declare the clearing, hearing closed. And then, um, any further discussion or do we want to move ahead and grant the motion? Okay. So on Counselor motion, uh, Counselor Seminelli's motion to grant, seconded by Counselor O'Malley. Um, and we would have the following conditions. One, that the engineer be called when dig save is notified, um, that the streets and sidewalks be restored to the satisfaction of the Department of, Director of Department of Public Works. And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, no opposed to those petitions and granted. Thank you, thank you very much, Zach, and please, uh, follow up on those things, uh, with the council. Right. Next order of business. Next order of business? Motions, orders, and resolutions, so kind of-
Paper three, six, zero, dash, twenty-four. Resolved. Where, resolved. Uh, whereas this legislative session bill, House eight seventy-two, Senate four eighty-one, an act establishing a climate change superfund and promoting polluter responsibility, also known as the Make Polluters Pay Bill, was filed. And whereas, if passed, this bill would establish a climate change superfund into which the largest oil and gas companies would pay over 25 years with each company's share proportional to their contribution to global greenhouse gas emissions between 2000 and 2018. And whereas, oil and gas companies bear the responsibility for exacerbating the climate crisis and have consistently misrepresented the destructive impacts of fossil fuel combustion on the global climate. And whereas, climate change caused by global warming poses many serious threats to the city of Malden and its residents, including extreme heat, flooding, poor air quality, and other extreme weather, which are already impacting the Malden community. And whereas, to adequately fund necessary climate adaptation and resilience projects, Malden requires funding at a scale beyond the reasonable constraints of the city's operating budget and the passage of the proposed Make Polluters Pay legislation in the State House would provide the means for Malden and other cities like it to adapt to climate impacts more adequately, equitably, and meaningfully. And whereas, the proposed legislation would mandate that forty percent of the monies raised be allocated to projects benefiting environmental justice communities, encourage utilization of apprenticeship work programs, and encourage adherence to prevailing wage laws. And whereas, this session, the Make Polluters Pay Bill was given a study order by the Joint Committee on the Environment and Natural Resources, but will be reintroduced in the next legislative session. And whereas, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts currently does not have a plan to adequately, equitably, and meaningfully fund necessary resilience and adaptation projects in affected communities like Malden, now therefore, be it resolved that the Malden City Council expresses its support of House eight seven-two, Senate four eighty-one, an act establishing a climate change superfund and promoting polluter responsibility to build polluter accountability and fund climate resilience. Be it further resolved that the city clerk forward a copy of this resolution to the Malden Legislative Delegation as well as the House Speaker, Senate President, and Office of the Governor. And this is sponsored by Counselor Taylor.
Counselor Taylor for the paper.
Thank you. Um, I, thank you, Council President. I want to thank everybody who came out to speak in favor of this tonight as well. Um, I think a lot of what I wanted to say has, has already really been said, um, but we are already facing the effects of climate change. Um, and we know the constraints of our budget. We know the constraints of what's coming down the line for things that we're going to need to be paying for. We know how bad this can get and, and we can only imagine how much more we're going to need to be able to pay. So I want to start planning for that now by advocating, um, accountability for those that cause this damage. Um, and, and to make sure that it is not just our residents, again, paying for, um, for solutions. Uh, so I hope that you will join me in supporting this tonight and we can pass it and pass it unanimously to send it to the state. Um, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Taylor. Counselor O'Malley.
Uh, thank you. I'd like to thank Counselor Taylor and the organizers for bringing this to our attention. Um, you know, as, as they stated, it's looking to create a superfund, uh, that communities like Malden, environmental justice communities that are disproportionately impacted by climate change can use to help fix some of the, the issues that have been caused by the polluters, whether it's rising seas or the, the temperatures. Um, you know, and some of our, our neighborhoods that are most heavily impacted include like Edgeworth with the Malden, with the Malden River, which, you know, if the Amelia Earhart Dam ever breaches or, or fails, you know, you have all of Edgeworth going underwater. Uh, you have Linden, you have the former Suffolk Square all along Route sixty, the low-lying areas. Um, these have a lot of our, our housing developments, our public housing developments. Um, so I'm fully in support. Um, I do think it makes sense for communities like Malden to be able to fix these things. And the Malden River Works, uh, project is a perfect example. That whole, um, project is looking to elevate the park so that when there are storm surges, it doesn't inundate, uh, Edgeworth. That costs a lot of money for us to do that. We shouldn't have to be paying for that. That really should be paid for by ExxonMobil and the other, you know, gas companies have caused these problems. Um, fully in support. Would like to be added as a, as a cosponsor if possible. Um, thank you again.
All right. Counselor McDonald.
Yeah, thank you. And I also want to thank, um, all the folks who come here to share their public comment. Um, this is really a grassroots-driven, uh, resolution that came from our neighbors and community members who are involved in environmental activism and said, the council can help move this forward, we hope, at the state level. Um, and so, uh, the timing is excellent with also, uh, the work we're also doing on a climate action plan and, and implementation of, um, of the, of the commission that can help, can help shepherd the city through that. But I, I just wanted to briefly, um, spell out, you know, my understanding of the bill. Someone will wave at me if I'm, I'm doing this and if I'm saying something wrong. My understanding is that, um, it would create this fund and then try to assess past liability. So from things that have already happened based on weather damage over ten, twenty years, something like that, um, in Massachusetts for fossil fuel ownership and production companies. So, so actually not utilities unless they themselves owned, um, you know, a coal mine or something. It's actually the, the companies that own and produce the, the fossil fuels themselves. Um, uh, and it would be a tax based, um, on those past actions, a one-time assessment that would go into the fund to then be distributed. Um, and that it would be, uh, there's a, there's a carve-out, a set aside for environmental justice communities like Malden in the fund. So, uh, I'll note that our own Senator Lewis is one of the sponsors of the current legislation. I, I really, I don't know what the prospects are, but given the scale of challenge over the next generation, I, I am super excited that there's any, you know, that we can do anything to help make those resources available. Thank you all for bringing this forward.
All right. Thanks, you, Counselor McDonald. Counselor Linehan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, don't want to be repetitive, just want to thank Counselor Taylor for, um, her leadership in bringing this forward. Happy to be co-sponsoring and also wanted to thank everyone who spent time with us tonight at Public Comment and also just sitting for the last hour while we took on other business. So until we get to this agenda item, um, I know that everybody has a life and a lot of other things going on, so we appreciate you giving us your time. Um, I do think, as others have said, there are very large-scale projects in the community that this could benefit from, but I think there are also some of the smaller things that I'm sure emerged in the climate action plan, um, but that also emerged from community members that are great ideas for mitigating heat impacts and greenhouse gas emissions. Things like adding shade to our parks or doing a gas lawn equipment buyback program or a de-paving initiative, things that rise up from the community but we don't have a ready source for. Um, so I think that we need to be thinking along a broad spectrum of, um, applications. I join Counselor McDonald in feeling a bit uncertain about what the future for this is, but I think we won't know if we don't try. And so I'm proud that Malden can be part of this and hopefully it's a groundswell of advocacy that can start to have an impact. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Linehan. Counselor Colan Hayes.
Thank you very much. I'll be very brief. Uh, I'll also thank, um, Counselor Taylor and the other sponsors for bringing this forward, but, uh, more importantly, for everybody who spoke here, I see some, um, representatives from some great groups in Malden and really, um, have been doing the work on the ground in AAACP, the Friends of Roosevelt Park, and the Friends of the Malden River. Um, so thank you and, um, for really coming forward and, and being here and saying your piece. And I would love to be, um, listed as a sponsor as well.
All right. Thank you. All right, um, other counselors? All right, um, I will speak if others are, are holding off. Um, so, yeah, I really appreciate the, um, the folks who came out. I, I know there was a great forum at Malden Catholic recently that I met many of the people and, and learned about this legislation for the first time. Um, I mean, I do, just a couple contexts. I know, um, we're about to wrap up our work to, uh, you know, repair our stormwater system and I tell everybody, what we learned from that is like, we, what we've done is give a good state repair to our 1970s stormwater system that was planned and based on what stormwater, uh, was anticipated in 1970s. It's not ready for 2070, so we as a city have no funding source to upgrade our stormwater to deal with the higher level of rain we will sometimes encounter or to deal with higher tides. I know Counselor Seika, um, you know, in particular, down in Linden, the Delta Terrace area has been very impacted. I'm very concerned of folks, Bowman Street, where we really need to add capacity. So, um, if there's not a source of funding, um, we will see more floods to happen in Malden and there's nothing, uh, more, uh, difficult for a, uh, resident to go through than having their home, you know, inundated by water and having to replace heating systems and, and drywall and everything in their basement. It's really, really disruptive. So, um, planning ahead and then, you know, just the greater context, uh, regionally, um, you know, working, we have plans, uh, with folks along the Saugus River to try to, um, you know, do more resiliency there, but where's that funding going to come from? So that, um, the, the, as tides rise and, I mean, just this past week, uh, you know, down on Long Wharf, you know, there was just a king tide. Those things are going to be happening more and more. So these things are being observed. So just in terms of stormwater, rising tide, we are a coastal community and we need, um, the resources to be able to do that. So it's important to have those things. I think the other thing, um, you know, there's just a, um, you know, we have challenges of, you know, I think it's kind of a, you know, Counselor Spatafora, you know, led to charge-related lead lines where, you know, as homes get transferred, we required, you know, lead lines to be taken out. Um, I think that's one thing we're going to have to look at in terms of our climate to have to look at in terms of our climate action planning of, you know, having people take out, you know, oil heat and that type of thing. But what we also found with the lead lines is that there are people who are not moving very quickly, and we needed to get lead lines out quicker. And so the fact that under the infrastructure bill, now that we can pay for, you know, lead service to be taken out of the private line, we're really accelerating things. So we need sources of money so that we can accelerate transition to electrification of, you know, homes and businesses, because that's a huge source of, you know, greenhouse gases. And so how we do that, so we need that. You know, so we need some, you know, building requirements to make sure that we are moving ahead on electrification. But we also need some resources for people who don't have the money. So that's just a whole nother thing. So that's really why I support, you know, the idea and concept, but it's not a cure-all. It's, you know, having worked, actually, my environmental law career was really focused on working under the superfund law. The superfund law helped pay for certain aspects, particularly where there was nobody to pay for it, where the companies had gone out of business. And, you know, that superfund was paid for by taxes on, you know, chemical sales. So that's how that worked, that fund got set up. But generally, most contaminated sites got cleaned up through, you know, just a normal process of redevelopment and that type of thing. So when a property was going to be, if a building was going to be built, the contamination, or someone mentioned Conway Park, and in some, well, yeah, the superfund made a bit of money to help clean that up, but the $5 million or whatever to do that park, that didn't all come from the superfund. So it helps, but, you know, the natural process of development has to happen, and we have to develop the codes that make sure that new development is going electric. So it's a combination of things, but this is a tool. So that's why I do support it, and that way we have resources to, you know, we, as a city, need the resources to update our infrastructure to deal with these challenges we face with the infrastructure that we have. And we also need resources to have residents who, you know, don't have the resources to do that. So that's why I support it in concept, and I do hope the legislature can work out the details and make this. But, you know, ultimately, it is, you know, change is going to take, you know, it's going to cost, and we do need to do this because not changing things is costing us as well. So I think that's the type of thing we have to move ahead. So any other counselors? So, all right, so then, on Counselor Taylor's motion to pass the resolve, seconded by Counselor McDonald, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so that passes unanimously. And so we're on to the next order of business then, so.
The next paper is Paper 361-24, which is a resolve.
Okay, let's see. Now, are you going to read the resolve then? Okay, all right. So Counselor Linehan is making a request to recuse herself, so.
Yes, I'm making a motion, or I guess asking for a motion to allow myself to be recused since the consultant that prepared the plan we're voting on is my employer.
All right. So, so, let's see, do we need to recall the motion to recuse? Second, all right. All right. So we just, all those in favor of allowing Counselor Linehan to recuse herself, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so you're recused, so let's see, let Counselor step aside.
Paper 361-24, resolve that it is the sense of the Malden City Council that it endorses the September 2024 Malden Climate Action Plan as the future roadmap for climate action in Malden. This builds on the environmental and sustainability investments that the council, mayor, and city staff has sustained in the past. Recognizing the broad community outreach that went into development of the 2024 plan, the council affirms its twin goals of climate mitigation to reduce greenhouse gases and climate resilience to prepare for worsening weather and climate impacts with a clear foundation of climate equity and environmental justice. With this endorsement, the council commits to engaging the recommendations of the plan and moving forward with its overall goals in partnership with city leadership and community organizations. Sponsor Carrie McDonald.
All right. Counselor McDonald for the paper. Give me one second, Carrie. All right. Counselor McDonald.
Thank you, Council President. I will keep this brief since we had a lot of conversation last week, but I want to say that I think that an endorsement like this really does matter, even though this is a non-vining resolution. But what we saw in our presentation last week is the amount of time, the number of people involved in crafting what we hope will be a really doable and ambitious plan for the goals of our city and our safe and healthy community. And so the resolution doesn't focus on any individual elements, but those broad goals of doing our part to protect the planet, protecting our neighborhoods, and making sure that we're clear about our justice commitments to climate equity. I want to be clear to folks watching, this doesn't automatically implement anything. Anything that still requires council action still has to come before the council to debate and vote and due process. But I think it affirms the important work and the participation that so many folks have had, and it names that this is not the first time that this council has been talking about environmental commitments. Long before I got on this council, many of the folks up at this table were already working on these issues. They did the pieces that allow us to build on that and be here today. So I just want to appreciate that and how, you know, help us collectively cheer on this next chapter. Much more to come, much more rubber hitting the road, or wheels to hit the tracks, as it may be. But I think that it is, I think this endorsement matters. I think that we just did a, you know, a little brief final get-together with our Climate Action Plan Steering Committee so that we can make this public announcement. This will be a part of that, hopefully. And just appreciation for all the folks who reviewed the plan, showed up at the public meetings, helped get the word out. It is, even though I am the lead sponsor, this is 110% a team effort, which is the only way that we are able to move our community forward. So thank you and hope for your unanimous support on this resolve.
Okay. All right. Counselor O'Malley.
I'd just like to be added as a co-sponsor, and I would second Counselor McDonald's motion.
All right. Thank you. Any counsel wishing to speak? All right. So yeah, I just, I just want to say excellent job of the committee. And I mean, I think we all just, on the prior resolution, really talked about the importance of this. This is just really making sure we, as a city council, really support this. We have those 15 strategies now that we have to go out, take some steps to implement, but I really appreciate the conciseness of that action plan in terms of what we need to do next. But there's a lot of work ahead, so, but this is an important step forward. Counselor Seminelli, let's see.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll just be quick. I just want to just commend Counselor McDonald, because, you know, you took this and you ran with it. You'd be an awful humble, and that's appreciative. But, you know, I've seen a lot of hard work that you put into this, so I just want to notice it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Seminelli. So on Counselor McDonald's motion to pass the resolve, seconded by Counselor Cullen Hayes, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, the paper, the resolve passes unanimously. Thank you very much. All right, next order of business. So we have two counselors who would like to recuse themselves, Counselor Seeca, Counselor Cullen Hayes. So, all right, let's turn that one off. Counselor Seeca, all right, so.
Yes, please. I make a motion that I am recused from voting on the following petitions along with Counselor Cullen Hayes. I am recusing myself because my uncle Basil owns Reggano's at 1160 East Nav, and Counselor Cullen Hayes needs to recuse herself for Metro Housing Families.
So, all right, so you're just a board member of Metro North Housing Corp. All right. So any questions on this? So all those in favor of allowing Counselor Seeca and Counselor Cullen Hayes to recuse themselves? So this is from all the committee reports?
It's just easier if we recuse ourselves from them, rather than you recusing me and them recusing her, and there's no need that we vote on them.
All right. So they're recusing themselves from all the parts of the committee reports from license committees. So all those in favor of the recusals?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So Counselor Seeca and Counselor Cullen Hayes, you're hereby recusing. Let's have Counselor Linehan come back. All right, here we go. All right, good.
Paper 362-24, Committee Report, the Standing Committee on License, to whom was referred Papers 317, 318, 321 through 326, Series of 2024. Having considered the same, make the following report. Committee recommends these papers out favorably to the full council.
So on Counselor Condon's motion to receive the committee report, seconded by Counselor Taylor, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the report is received. Clerk will read the papers.
Paper 317-24, Petition, Livery Company, Pablo Transport LLC, 26 Blaine Street, Malden, One Vehicle New. Paper 318-24, Petition, Livery Driver, Jaspreet Singh, 26 Blaine Street, New. Paper 321-24, Petition, Lodging House Cedar House LLC, 116-118 Cedar Street, 14 Rooms Renewal. Paper 322-24, Petition, Lodging House Metro North Housing Corp., 22 Charles Street, 11 Rooms Renewal. Paper 323-24, Petition, Lodging House Metro North Housing Corp., 115 Washington Street, 14 Rooms Renewal. Paper 324-24, Petition, Outdoor Parking Reggano's, 1160 Eastern Avenue, 15 Spaces Renewal. Paper 325-24, Pool Tables, Amazing Billiards LLC, 40 Faulkner Street, Malden, 18 Tables New. Paper 326-24, Petition, Taxi Driver Louis Ajoku, 128 Williams Street, Number 3, Chelsea, New.
All right. Counselor Condon for the committee. Oh, one second. Let me get you going. There you go, Counselor. Great.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is, eight different papers are requesting license. The compliance people are out there, visited all these businesses at the license committee. They stated there was absolutely no problems from any of them, so I move that we grant these petitions.
All right. So any discussion on Counselor Condon's motion to grant these eight petitions, seconded by Counselor Taylor? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, those petitions are hereby granted. All right. And so then on to the next paper.
Paper 363-24, Committee Report, the Standing Committee on Rules and Ordinance, to whom was referred Paper 286, Series of 2024. Having considered the same, make the following report. Committee recommends this paper out favorably to the full council as amended, in part by accepting the recommendations of the Planning Board derived from the public hearing held on July 24, 2024, and further amended by committee during the meeting of September 17, 2024. And just to be specific, okay, the specific amendments made in committee are as follows. Counselor O'Malley made a motion to amend the paper as recommended by the Planning Board with the exception of 2.28.140.1J.2. The words "last building" will be replaced with "third building," and the words "final MIPA certificate" will be replaced with "current MIPA certificate dated January 22, 2024." Additionally, under Planning Board Recommendation Number 3, the request for parking study with peer review is denied.
So on Counselor Linehan's motion to receive the committee report, seconded by Counselor Seeca, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the committee report is received. Clerk will read the paper.
Paper 286-24, Beordordained by the Malden City Council that the Code of the City of Malden, Title 12, Chapter 28, Section 140, Rose Quarry Reclamation and Redevelopment District is hereby amended as follows.
Okay. So Counselor Linehan for the committee. Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
All right. Here we go.
There we go. Thank you, Mr. President. So as the clerk stated, the ordinance committee met last week to discuss the zoning changes, which essentially are looking to facilitate the final phase of redevelopment of the old Rose Quarry site, the Overlook Ridge area. There was a joint planning and ordinance meeting in July where we went through the proposed changes. Essentially, it's going to be allowing housing in addition to commercial in the final phase of the redevelopment, which I know is something that the mayor and OSPCD and Counselor Seeca and just a tremendous amount of staff in the city have been working on for a very long time. What we discussed in committee last week was some of the recommended changes that the Planning Board had discussed, and then we also voted on the two amendments that the clerk just described. So the First Amendment, basically, they're both to add specificity around the timing of things and which document we're referring to. So there's an environmental review that has to take place, and then there's some transportation management enhancements, including a ramp ideally off of Route 1, but there was not enough specificity of when those things would be triggered in the way that it was previously worded. So we proposed an amendment that made it more specific as to which, the most current environmental review that we were going to be referring to, and then also the specific building whose occupancy permit would then trigger the transportation improvement so that there was no ambiguity, and so that we're not left not getting these transportation enhancements that we're expecting. This is an amazing package of zoning that is going to bring not just housing, as most people know, it's market rate rental right now. This will be bringing ownership 55-plus and affordability to the site, hundreds of units, and the Heli administration is in strong support of this, so huge kudos to the team that's been working on it. I just had the privilege of moving this through my committee, but I think we did a good job discussing the recommendations of the Planning Board and coming to a recommendation that I think is going to really be a huge benefit to the city. And there's something like a 70% resident preference for Malden, so I think this is just going to be a huge, huge accomplishment. And I guess I defer to Counselor Seeca if she has anything else she wants to add, but I think we are hoping to enroll and ordain this tonight if we can.
Counselor Seeca.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Linehan. I don't think I have anything that I need to add, other than I'm hoping that we can, I can make a motion to approve this, to enroll this this evening. It's been well over a year that we've been discussing this project, so for it to actually be here and getting voted on is amazing. I wasn't quite sure we would actually ever get to this point, going back and in the forth, so I make a motion that we enroll this.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Seeca, and seconded by Counselor O'Malley. Counselor McDonald had a, want to say something else? There you go.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to very quickly appreciate the work of Counselor Seeca to get us to this point. I mean, this is a big deal, getting this amount of housing built in a way that balances all the different things we need to balance. Lot of appreciation as well to our city staff. Debbie Burke is sitting in the audience tonight. I saw Ron Hogan sitting out in the hallway. I don't think that the general public understands how much it takes to bring a project like this to fruition, all the work with every level of government and every permitting agency and every single neighbor with an opinion. And so this is, I just think this is a big win for Malden, and I'm really grateful for the amount of work that it's taken to get us to this point, the mayor's support. Thanks for this. I hope this is a good demonstration of what's possible.
All right. Counselors Spatafora.
Yeah, I want to echo the thoughts the rest of my council shared. I know, being a councilor, serving here the longest, I remember those meetings. I'm looking at Debbie Burke going in there with all the neighbor complaints, and it certainly took a village to make this change happen with Counselor Seeca, Debbie Burke, Michelle Romero, and certainly Ron Hogan. I remember when they first came to the city asking for this change. It was not with ownership. It was for rental. And Counselor Seeca and I were talking, and we said, you know, we've done a lot of, that property, for those councils who know, has gone through a lot of changes. Originally, it was hotel and all these things, and, you know, markets changed and fluctuations changed, but we threw out ownership, thinking we'd never got it, and then to the mayor's credit, and I think probably Michelle and Debbie and Ron, they ran with it, and I think we settled on having that 55, which is great. You know, we love, we love young people here, but, you know, old people don't have kids, and that's always good for the school system. And it's, you're old. And it's just a good, I think it's a good mix of how the city is able to deliver housing for that band of citizens, which we, to be quite honest, we never focus on, right? And it's a big development, it's a lot of units up there. So kudos to everybody. And that project has not been easy on anybody. So this is a big win for us. Thank you.
Counselor Seminelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. Listen, you know, listening to the developments, you know, homeownership is paramount. I mean, people want the American dream. We're doing that down on Bryant Street with the Temple Site, and I actually have a couple of other sites that I'm actually sniffing out at the moment. But I would be remiss, though, if I didn't put this on the table. I think I put it on the table in the committee last week. And, you know, wind development, I brought wind development down here when I was a city councilor back in 2000, early 2000, and brought them in to take over Bowden Apartments. And there was a lot of concessions made. There was, you know, a lot of promises made. And they really haven't held up their end of the bargain. And I've got a lot of problems at the Bowden Street Apartments, a lot of problems. No matter, I mean, I've got the chief getting all the reports and all the calls, 911 calls that cost the city thousands of dollars. It's on a weekly basis. We just had another shooting there a week ago, this past Friday. And I'm, you know, I'm waiting to talk to them, so I don't want to, like, smash on them too much. But you know what? I represent that neighborhood. And, you know, especially some of you city councilors at Lodge, not against yous, man, but, you know, I got some issues. So, you know, and I, you know, I'm looking for some help here. We've had the police department down there for like a year, but it's not up to the police department to be, you know, supplying security for development for profit. They can't do it. They don't have the manpower. So again, you know what? I'm not going to, I'm not going to get into all the details. You know, I'm working with Director Debbie Burke, and I have all confidence in her to bring these folks to the table, and I think we can ratify it. But I just want to. bring these folks to the table, and I think we can ratify it, but I just want my colleagues to know that I have some, and if I'm telling you I've got some serious problems, I have some serious problems, so, you know, and listen, what, what comes in my neighborhood is going in yours, because they gotta go by your neighborhood to get through mine one way or another, whether they go 93, whether they go Route 1 on their way out. But again, you know, we've had some seven overdoses in three years, couple of murders, I don't know. So, you know, again, different, different type of development. You have, you know, homeownership, which, you know, puts people's roots in, changes things very much, but, you know, I'm trying to develop a tenant association right now, which gives them more power with HUD. I did it down at Noon Street, I just did it at Suffolk Manor, and again, you know, I'm, you know, working with Debbie Burke, we've worked before on, on stuff like this, but, I mean, I got a serious problem. I got, you know, kids that live down there, you know, and I got, I got some serious issues. So, if anybody wants to, you know, want me to brief you on it after this meeting's over, or anytime, give me a call, and like I said, you know, I could, I could use some assistance with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Simonelli. Counselor Sika.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that the motion that I made to enroll, we actually have to, I have to make a motion to amend it before we enroll it.
Okay, so.
Was it amended?
In the committee?
It was.
Enroll as amended.
Enroll as amended, okay.
By committee, all right, okay, all right. So, that's the motion to enroll as amended in committee, all right. So, any further discussion? So, all right, yeah, I mean, great work from, from the staff and the councils who served on the committee. I mean, I know in terms of, you know, working on our housing, you know, plan and that type of thing, I mean, having, you know, one of the desires we had out of our community in our survey was to have homeownership opportunities. I mean, I think this could be a win-win, because there's people in our community that want to stay in our community, they don't really need a big home, because their families have moved on, but they don't have a place to go that they can afford, so having the senior 55-plus housing is great that way. It's a win-win that people can move on but stay in the community, and, and other families can move into that housing, as well as having the affordable housing, so I think it's a great win-win, and it was really something we were looking in terms of our, our housing plan, so congratulations on that. So, so then on Counselor Sika's motion to enroll as amended by the committee, seconded by Counselor O'Malley, Clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Counselor Condon.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Linehan.
Yes.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor Sika.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Spatafora.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counsel President Winslow.
Yes, so that paper is now enrolled, and then we will wait two weeks to ordain it, so, all right.
No.
Do you want to?
We're going to ordain it tonight.
Do you want to ordain it tonight? It doesn't have to, but if people are willing. So, on Counselor Sika's motion, well, we have to, motion to suspend the rules to ordain this evening, seconded by Counselor Condon, what, oh, let's see, Debbie, okay, yeah, sure, yeah.
I'm sorry.
All right, all right, all right. Director Burke, please come to the podium.
I think we may need to have the city solicitor here. There were amendments mentioned to the paper in committee. I don't fully understand all the processes, but the amendments have to be approved by all the council, and that, and then the paper's amended in front of the 11, and then that paper's enrolled. What you have in front of you before that amendment was just a paper in committee with some suggestions to amend. They weren't formally enacted by the 11 people. But again, I'm not an attorney, so I'm not sure if that's what has to happen.
What? Okay.
Can you just hear from Michelle, too, for a minute, because she feels that we're missing a process.
Hi, Michelle Romero, City Planner. It's my understanding you have to amend the paper. You received the committee report, which recommended amendments, but the paper hasn't been amended. The committee doesn't amend the paper, the council would amend the paper.
So.
So, I think you have to amend the paper, and then you enroll.
The committee can't amend a paper, they can only make recommendations to amend a paper.
Yeah, you've received recommendations to amend it, but again, that's just my experience on how you've done it before, so I think you need to amend the paper.
It does make sense.
A separate vote to amend the paper. Then you would enroll the amended paper.
Yeah, I, I mean, I will, actually, I think this is a parliamentary type of thing that, I mean, I typically, committees can actually amend papers and then refer them back as amended, but I will, I will have our clerk interpret that.
I think my interpretation is that they're making the recommendation to you to amend, and I do agree with the way that Michelle just explained it, that the committee doesn't necessarily make the amendments, they're making a committee report to recommend the paper be amended, and now you will vote it together as a body to accept those amendments.
All right, so, so we will take a step back.
Make a motion to amend.
All right, so we will first take Counselor Sika's motion to amend the paper, consistent with the, of the committee recommendations, seconded by Counselor Spatafora. Clerk will take the roll, call on the amendments.
All we need is a voice vote on an amendment.
Okay, so a voice, voice, voice vote on those amendments, so everybody understand the amendments?
Yes.
So, all those in favor of amending the paper based on the committee recommendations, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so the paper is now amended, and so now we will then take the vote on Counselor Sika's motion to enroll the paper as amended, seconded by Counselor O'Malley.
Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Counselor Condon.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Linehan.
Yes.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor Sika.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Spatafora.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counsel President Winslow.
Yes, so the paper is enrolled as amended, so then I will entertain Counselor Sika's motion to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend rules for the purpose of ordaining?
For the purpose of ordaining, seconded by Counselor Taylor. Clerk will call the roll. That takes nine votes.
Yes.
Counselor Condon.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Linehan.
Yes.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor Sika.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Spatafora.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counsel President Winslow.
Counsel President Winslow, yes, so the paper is now ordained. Great work, and looking forward to seeing that project go to fruition. So, all right, so now the docket is clear, and would anyone like personal privilege? I have Counselor Sika up first.
Thank you. I just wanted to remind everybody that a week from this Sunday, Sunday, October 6th, is our annual Public Safety Day at the Linden School Field. It starts at, why don't I know, it's 11 o'clock? I can't find the flyer. Came up, you pressed my button.
Okay, well, you were first.
Way too fast. 11 o'clock, having a brain freeze. 11 o'clock on Sunday, October 6th, at the Linden Park, Public Safety Day, there'll be Touch a Truck, all kinds of demonstrations from Public Works, Public Health, the police and fire. It's a fun day for the family, 11 to 2, I'm pretty confident is the time, it's three hours long. Come have some pizza, some treats, and grab a pumpkin, and we look forward to seeing you there. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Counselor, Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Thank you, everyone. This past Saturday, unfortunately, the North Shore Hispanic Association's event had to be canceled due to rain, and it's also, right now, Hispanic Heritage Month, so yay for that, but what we did is, we did reschedule it. It is for this coming, I'm not sorry, for Sunday, this time, October 13th, 12 to 3:30. It's still in Maplewood Square. We're getting back most of the vendors and most of the community tables so far, and our performers, so we're very excited about that. There's still going to be food, we're still going to do the parade, starting at 6:30 Salem Street and walking in to the grand entrance at Maplewood Square. So, thank you, and I hope you all come for that. And then this Saturday, September 28th, at Corder Malley Park, is Fuji's annual plant swap, and so we're partnering with Malden Pride, Pride in Malden, and Malden Grows, which is a great community group that's recently formed here in Malden, so I hope to see you there.
All right, thank you, Counselor Spatafora.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll start with the happy news. I want to wish a happy birthday to Owen Council from Ward, is that eight? Ward Councilor Jadeen Sika, happy birthday today, and then happy birthday to my wife. They both share the same birthday, so it's hard for me to forget, which is very easy, so happy birthday, your son's birthday, too? Chris Simonelli's son, so it's a happy day for everyone, so happy birthday, we won't sing. I do want to also ask for a moment of silence for Dina Malgeri, who is the long, were you going to do that, Steve?
Yeah, no, go ahead.
You sure?
We'll do that.
No, you want to do it?
You just reminded me.
No, no, you want to do it, you can do it.
I can do it, yeah, sure.
All right, so Dina Malgeri served, she was 95, I believe. Talk about her, if you ever met her, her dedication to the library, like most librarians, right? They're born that way, the Dewey Decimal System is in their blood. From 1972 to 2013, she served as the librarian, so think of that. 2072 to 2013, she was there before I was born. She oversaw the building of the 1994 Park Street Building, which is the addition on there, and the renovation of the Converse Memorial Building and its placement on the National Register of Historic Places. She was a wonderful, I had the opportunity, when I was president, to serve with her, you know, that's a de facto, and she just, you know, like most librarians, they, they live for those, those buildings and the knowledge that they help all the individuals, so sad day for the city of Malden, sad day for the Maldon Library, so if we could all give a moment of silence.
Yeah, so let's have a moment of silence. Thanks, Counselor Burke. Thank you very much. Counselor Simonelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank everybody that participated and helped out with the luau for the Suffolk Manor folks a week or so back. I got you, I got you on the next one, I'm sorry, I forgot. So, I'm working on something now for, I'm going to do the trunk-a-treat, is that right? So, I'm going to be doing that, so the residents of Ward 7 know that I will participate in that, and I'll have a little special treat for them at that, and I also want to let the seniors know that I'm probably going to be doing something for Halloween for them, too, so I just haven't had a date yet, Mr. President. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Simonelli. Counselor McDonald.
You put me on.
Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor O'Malley, I'm sorry. Counselor O'Malley.
Hello, everyone. On this, this Sunday, September 29th, at 10:00 a.m., we'll be hosting a cleanup at Waits Mount at 75 Leonard Street. The reason why we're doing this cleanup is in anticipation for the stargazing and storytelling event, which is going to be on Saturday, October 5th, at 6:00 p.m. This is a event that is put on with Malden Reads, the One Book One City. We're going to have North Shore Amateur Astronomy Club, the various astronomy people, and the storytime will begin at 6:15, and then when sunset happens, we'll start looking at the sky, at the stars. Please all come, it's a great event. Looking forward to seeing you there. Thank you.
All right, great. Now, Counselor McDonald.
Yeah, just super fast. When I was thanking the city staff for work on the, on the zoning change that we just did, I just did, I didn't thank Michelle Romero, who was sitting also right in the audience, so thanks to Michelle for her work on the project.
Counselor Taylor.
Thank you, Council President. So, just a couple of things. I, I had a constituent send me that they are planning a Maldon Community Health Fest. It is actually at Lincoln Commons in that beautiful park, and it'll be taking place on Saturday, October 19th, with a rain date of Saturday, October 26th, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and it is free, and there is lots of great guest speakers and things to do, and, and if you want to be a vendor, you can be. And then as far as Halloween events go, the Forestale Halloween will be coming back for younger kids and school-aged kids, and then we are also planning more of an older kid, adult-themed haunted walk in Pine Banks, so more information to come on the date and all the specifics, but very excited, as Halloween is my, my favorite holiday, so I hope you will join us, and happy birthday, Counselor Sika.
All right, great. Happy birthday. And yes, I do want to say that, you know, the Maplewood Association is working to hold a Halloween festival for the Maplewood area, including Ward 6, on Sunday, October, that's the, oops, I just messed it up, Sunday, October 27th, at the Salem Wood School, so we're looking forward to that. And then I just wanted to say, you know, we know Maldon has a very large and active Haitian community, and I really want to speak in support of our Haitian community. Just as so many Maldonians who immigrated here, they work hard, enjoy raising families, and serve in our religious government and culture institutions here, so they're a very important asset to the community, and I think as Council President, I commit to call out those who propagate lies to create fear about immigrants, rather than to create understanding of both benefits, of both the benefits and challenges of communities like Maldon and Springfield, Ohio, who face the challenges of when new immigrants arrive and become members of our community. So, I just want to speak up in support of Haitian communities here and across the country that are being unfairly challenged, so I just wanted to make that statement. Thank you very much, and then everybody have a, have a great weekend, and we'll see everybody next week, so.
Move to adjourn.
Counselor O'Malley, seconded by Counselor McDonald, we're so adjourned, so, great, great. All right.